Let's call the board of the regular Sparks City Council meeting of March 28th, that would be April 28th, 2014 with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini?
Here.
Council members ready?
Here.
Lawson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Kerrigan?
Here.
Schmidt, absent. City Attorney Adams?
Here.
And City Manager Driscoll?
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Okay, if you'd all stand for the invocation speaker, Pastor Barb West of Sparks Church of Missouri. Welcome, Barb.
It's a privilege to be with you. Thanks for having me. Would you bow your heads in prayer for me, please? Our heavenly Father, we thank you for the donning of another beautiful day. And you know all of the things that the city council and Mayor Martini have to go through today. You know everything that's on the agenda. And we just pray that it will run smoothly and well, and that you will help them to make the right decisions. Lord, there's always things that have a double-edged sword, and so we just pray that the right ones will be chosen and voted in. And then, Lord, we thank you for our city and for all of our elected and appointed officials. We thank you for the public servants, Lord. And we just ask that you will protect us, direct us, and provide for us. We ask you too to be with us as we go out into our community for all of the events that we have. We are so thankful for our city and ask that you would help us to be good servants, to take care of it. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor West. We appreciate that. If you've been standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Lawson, would you lead us, please?
Yes, please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, for the council, the system's not correctly working today, so if you want to speak, make sure you press your button so you get a red light to speak. And I don't know if the request to speak the list is going to work, which it is not, so if I don't recognize you, just speak up and let me know, okay? Okay, let's move on to comments from the public. I have no speaking cards. Madam Clerk, do you have any speaking cards?
No.
Okay. Moving on to reconsideration, Mr. Driscoll.
Thank you, Sir Mayor, members of the council, Steve Driscoll, City Manager, for the record. What you have before you is an agenda item to consider, discuss, and have a possible motion and possible approval of a motion to reconsider being brought forward by Council Member Smith for action that was taken on Agenda Item 6.9 on April 14th. This was the city's budget and with specifics related to a vote that was taken on the manager's budget recommendations, which included franchise agreement and additional personnel and other items. And so Mr. Smith is asking the council to reconsider that, to adjust a vote from that prior meeting.
So, one thing, Mr. Driscoll, the process here is we can reconsider, and then when would this be reconsidered if the council votes to reconsider?
If there is a positive on the reconsider, there is an agenda item currently on your 6.6.
Okay.
That brings it for both for this and/or the next item that is here. 6.6 is exactly what was considered on the 14th under Item 6.9 in its total.
Okay, on the first recommendation, do we have a motion to reconsider?
Mr. Mayor, I just have a question.
Go ahead.
There's only four of us here today. Will that affect, that won't change anything? Do we have to have a 4-0 vote, or it would...
This is approving items related to the budget. It just takes a simple majority in order to pass any of the items that's in front of you today.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion to reconsider the first item?
I'll make that motion if I can.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Ratty to reconsider the first item. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. It's up on the screen on the right-hand side over here. Okay, passes unanimously, so that will be taken into consideration. And now, item number two, do we have a motion to reconsider that particular item?
Mr. Mayor, if I might, this one's slightly different if I can just, for the purposes of discussion. This was a matter brought forward by Councilmember Smith, actually on behalf of Councilmember Smith, for similar activities we discussed in the first one. This was relating to the third part of the original Agenda Item 6.9 that was discussing the capital improvement plan. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, sir.
Okay, any questions? Motion?
Does somebody besides Councilman Smith need to make a motion?
Plumb, your honor, for the evidence.
Someone on the ground.
So I will make that motion.
A second?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Kerrigan to approve the reconsideration. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to the approval of the agenda. Approval of the agenda, we need to take one item out of order. It seems like 6.5 needs to be approved after 8.2, so if we don't approve 8.2, then there's no need to take any action on 6.5. So I would like to amend the agenda to have Item 6.5 heard after 8.2. So if you can make that part of your motion, I'd appreciate it. Any questions? Looking for a motion?
So, I'll take that. So I move to approve the agenda as presented, with the exception of moving 6.5 to follow 8.2.
Correct. Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve the agenda as amended. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. 3.1, consideration of possible approval of minutes of the regular Sparks City Council meeting for April 14th, 2014. Any omissions, deletions, or corrections? If not, looking for a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Lawson to approve the minutes of April 14th, 2014. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, let's move on to presentation items. First, we have a proclamation, Emergency Medical Services Week. I see some people out here, so I'm assuming we have somebody here to accept this? All right, I'll go ahead and read it, and then someone can come up and accept and say a few words. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas Sparks Fire Department's, REMSA's, and Care Flight's commitment to patient care throughout northern Nevada has been an integral factor in our community's safety, security, and success, and whereas the region is proud to have an organization such as Sparks Fire Department, REMSA, and Care Flight operating within the region to ensure the highest quality of patient care and community support, and whereas the success of the Sparks Fire Department, REMSA, and the Care Flight have accomplished, are accomplished, are an indication of its employees, staff's dedication to the many communities served, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, I gino our Martini Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim May 18th through the 24th, 2014, as Emergency Medical Services Week. Thank you. Somebody want to come up and accept this?
Mayor, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to have a group picture of you two.
Just me alone as a group, Joe.
But I'd also like to ask our battalion chief to turn on a justice group picture and also our captain.
Whatever you want, sir.
It takes all of us to get the job done.
Got somebody to take a picture? Move on down?
We got a whole different perspective on this picture.
I think even I retire, somebody can show up and see what I'm looking at.
Quite the sight.
For the record, Jim Goebbels. On behalf of REMSA and Care Flight, we are very pleased to accept this proclamation. It is every day working with the Sparks Fire Department along with REMSA in providing services for the community, for the citizens of Sparks, and we are very proud to do that. So thank you very much.
Okay, let's move on to 4.2. I enjoy this one every year. Proclamation for Older Americans Month. Is there someone here to accept that?
Yes, he didn't make me.
Okay, good. You guys don't look old enough to be here for Older Americans Month. All right, I'll go ahead and read the proclamation, then you can come on up and say a few words. Hi, Grady. Whereas the City of Sparks includes many citizens ages 60 and older, and whereas the City of Sparks is committed to helping all individuals live longer, healthier lives, and whereas the older adults in the City of Sparks have made countless contributions and sacrifices to ensure a better life for future generations, and whereas we recognize the value of injury prevention and safety awareness in helping older adults remain healthy and active, whereas our community can provide opportunities to enrich the lives of individuals young and old by emphasizing the need to take action to safeguard themselves from unintentional injuries where they live and work and socialize, providing information on avoiding leading causes of injury for older adults, falls, motor vehicle-related incidents, suffocation, medication overdose, and fire burns, and helping older adults take control of their safety and well-being. Now, therefore, I gino our Martini Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim May 2014 as Older Americans Month, and we urge every resident to take time this month to recognize older adults and the people who serve and support them as powerful and vital individuals who greatly contribute to our community.
Council. Great pleasure to be here, always a pleasure to be here. Like to thank the City of Sparks for all your support of senior services and our work together. Have a great relationship with Tracy Domingos, who's the head of the Parks and Recreation Department. We have a lot planned over the coming year, and at a certain point, we'd like to come back and tell you about some of those projects. For today, it's about Older Americans Month. We have 60 events planned during the month, and a number of them in Sparks, at the Senior Center, and at several other locations as well. And probably the most popular event is going to be on Friday, May 9th, when Mayor Martini joins Mayor Kachel at Ninth and Sutro to have a conversation with the community. We're looking forward to that, as we always do. But want to also make sure people are aware of the Ice Cream Social and a presentation on travel at the Sparks Senior Center, if I can find it. That's going to be Thursday, May 15th, starting at 11 o'clock in the morning. So again, it's a great event. There's none of us here that have to be concerned with this old age thing, but for those in our community that do, this is certainly one way that we can help them get ready. One additional thing is that on May 1st, at Ninth and Sutro at the Washoe County Senior Center, we're having opening ceremonies, and we're having guests from all our commissioners, commissioners of the city council, local representatives, national representatives as well, to come and kick it off for us. But there's going to be 35 agencies there with an information fair. We had almost 600 people there last year, and we're looking forward to as many this year. So again, thank you very much for your support. Look forward to working with you for the coming years. Thank you.
Thanks, Grady. Donna?
I'm Donna Clontz. I'm Chair of the Reno Senior Citizen Advisory Board and also on the county's Senior Advisory Committee. I'd also like to thank you and the staff of the City of Sparks for helping us get the proclamation presented today so that we can let all of the citizens of Sparks, who happen to be 50 or older, who are usually considered seniors, to know about the activities that are planned for them. I'm guessing that if we had a show of hands in this room, that probably half of us would fit that category. And one of the reasons that this is such a fun and such an engaging month for all of us is that a good quarter of our population in our county are of that age and are living happy, active, social lives, but also need our help to continue doing that. And during this month, there'll be a lot of activities for folks to enjoy. Grady mentioned the opening ceremonies on the 1st of May. We also have a closing ceremonies on the 31st of May, which will be a great picnic in the park at Neal Road, a free event, and most of the activities in the book of 60-plus activities are free activities. There'll be transportation for a few of them, many of them, for seniors that want to attend at the various locations. We have, as Grady mentioned, the mayor's having a talk about seniors and two seniors on the 9th. There are also a couple of walks in the Sparks Marina that are fundraisers for healthy events, the Cancer Society, the March of Dimes at the beginning of the month. And we have a Sparks Candidates Night for those folks that are running for the various offices in Sparks. That will be the 27th at the Sparks Senior Center. So we spread the activities all over the county, from the lake through Washoe County, through Reno and Sparks, so that seniors who live in all these places could participate. So we thank you again for honoring the seniors in the community and for all your help in providing great services for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for being here, and thanks what you do for seniors. We appreciate it. Any questions? Okay, moving on to month, to proclamation for the month as National Bike Month and Bicycle Safety Month. Is anyone here to accept this? Come on down, ladies. I thought I saw you somewhere. I understand you have a presentation to do too, so I'll read the proclamation, and then I'll let you do your presentation. Whereas the bicycle is a viable and environmentally sound form of transportation, not that I would know because I don't use any anymore, but Julia knows, right, Julia? Okay. And an excellent form of recreation, and there is a need to promote alternative forms of transportation such as walking and biking in order to reduce pollution, traffic congestion, America's dependence on fossil fuels, and improve the health and well-being of our citizens. And whereas creating a bicycle-friendly community has been shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, and quality of life, to boost community spirit, to improve traffic safety, and to reduce pollution and congestion, and to stimulate economic growth, and whereas millions will experience the joys of bicycling during the month of May through education and safety programs, community events, or just getting out and going for a ride. And whereas bike paths and trails of Washoe County attract thousands of bicyclists each year from around the region, providing economic, health, and scenic benefits for all, and whereas these bicycling activities and attractions have great potential to have a positive impact on the City of Sparks' economy and tourism industry, and to stimulate economic development by making the region attractive to businesses and citizens who enjoy out-of-doors and healthy lifestyles, and whereas May has been declared National Bike Month for the last 58 years and is so again in 2014. Now, therefore, I gino our Martini Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2014 as National Bike Month and Bicycle Safety Month, the week of May 10th through the 16th as Bike to Work, School, and Fun Week throughout Washoe County, and encourage all citizens to enjoy the benefits of bicycling, recognizing the importance of bicycle safety, and be more aware of cyclists on our streets. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
I'm M.J. Cloud, and I'm the Coordinator for Safe Routes to School for the Washoe County School District. I am also a member of TIMBA, which is the Truckee Meadows Bike Alliance.
And I am Julie Hunter, the Chair of the Truckee Meadows Bike Alliance, and also Senior Air Quality Specialist with the Washoe County Health District.
We do have a really short presentation to show you guys, hopefully lift the mood and let you see what we see.
Where's this going to work? Nowhere? Just over there?
I can turn the monitor around. Everybody else gets to say.
This will be a very short presentation.
It will. So I'll just go, Bike to Work Week is May 10th through the 16th. We have lots of events that are coming up. I think you might know of some of them. Bike to the Ballpark will be happening on Mother's Day, May 11th. So we'll have Reno Bike Project will be out there valeting bikes for those of you who want to ride your bike in. You'll also get a discounted ticket. Lots of booths outside, Air Quality Management Division will be there, Safe Routes to School, Zero Fatalities, promoting safety, primarily making sure that people on bikes are wearing helmets and have reflective gear and things like that. We also have the commuter challenge that people can go to bikemadada.org, register for the commuter challenge, lots of great prizes to win. You can also register as an individual, and we have grant prizes for that as well. And then our Rack 'Em Up at School Contest. Last year, we had nine schools participating. This year, we have doubled the prize amount from $1,500 to $3,000, and we have the best decorated bike rack and the fullest bike rack, and we have first, second, and third place prizes for elementary, middle school, and high school. So that should be fun. We have lots of pictures coming up. Some of the pictures on the screen was from last year's event. So we're excited about this year, and join us when you can.
Okay, maybe you can make arrangements through our clerk to email that presentation to each of the council people so we get it, if you don't mind. I apologize for our problems today.
And you know, it is attached to the agenda item, so you guys can see it there.
All right, anything else? Any questions?
We do look forward to, for you joining us and committing that time and the support for the mayoral challenge. Directly from the mayoral challenge, it ends at the Discovery Museum, and we'll go right from there to Echo Loader. Everybody who is participating will put the books in their backpack and ride and deliver the books, and so far, Safe Routes has raised over 1,000 books to be delivered.
So we need lots of bicyclists.
Julia?
So what she's referring to is on May 15th, there is the mayoral challenge where you can ride your bike from Sparks City Hall to Reno City Hall and then back to the Discovery Museum for this event. I will be representing the City of Sparks, but of course, I invite all of you to get your bike out, dust it off, and join us if you'd like to make that ride.
I'll just add one more.
I am riding the chopper, yes.
Good. We're excited to have you there. Thank you. And May 15th, we'll start here at 9:00 a.m. Reno News &amp; Reviews has also donated graciously. They're going to have some nutrition breaks for us, and Red Rock Water, it's not easy to say, will be donating. We'll have water filling stations there for everybody to fill up their water, too. So we appreciate everybody pitching in and helping to contribute to these great events. See you soon. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, let's move on to consent items 5.1 through 5.4. Anybody want to pull a consent item? Mr. Kerrigan?
I'd like to pull 5.3.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, looking for a motion?
Move to approve consent items 5.1, 5.2, and 5.4.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Lawson to approve 5.1, 2, and 4. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. 5.3, Mr. Kerrigan?
Somebody come down and own this? Jeff, you might want to come down because it's a budget question. And while you're walking down, I'll ask my question. I understand where we're getting to $21,000. Where are we getting to $9,000 a month?
I'm Sherri Flynn, IT Systems Administrator. One of the attachments, the sales quote, has monthly charges of $8,915.47.
Yeah, that's not my question. My question is what part of the, what line is it coming out of?
Jeff, financial services. That's ongoing cost. Your mic's not on.
Sit back. There we go. That's an ongoing cost. We have that every year anyway, so that's built into, that's built into the budget.
That's, we do that, whether we were going to switch to voiceover.
Yes.
If we were still with AT&amp;T or whoever our carrier is, we'd be paying that anyway, right?
Yes, that's an ongoing line item within each department.
Okay, thank you. That's all I wanted.
Just one question.
Good.
So if every phone, and I forgot how many phones it was, 400 and something phones? If every phone lit up at the same time, like in the case of an emergency, is there enough bandwidth to do that?
Yes, there will be. We're getting a separate line put in to handle the voice communication. It's not going to interfere with our other internet or anything like, anything else like that, so yes.
Are we running our computers over the same broadband as we are the phones?
No.
So this is separate from that?
Yes.
So I could light up every phone at the same time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And we're also keeping some landlines available for emergency purposes?
Yeah, I'm just thinking about, like in the flood, I know there's a lot of people on the phone, and we want to make sure we have that capacity. Well, yeah, I'm fast. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, looking for a motion?
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Kerrigan, seconded by Councilwoman Lawson to approve 5.3. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to 6.1, consideration of possible endorsement and authorization for the mayor to sign a letter of request to Nevada Department of Transportation to relinquish certain Truckee River water rights. Mr. Driscoll? Mr. Hummel, I should have known. Has to do with water.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For the record, Andy Hummel, Utility Manager for the city. This item before you today is a letter request to NDOT for them for support and commitment to relinquish certain water rights on their roadways in the Truckee Meadows. This is in support of the Truckee River Operating Agreement, TROA. This could be, this is allowed under NRS 408 527. They can relinquish property to cities or counties for public benefit. We believe there could be up to 2,700 acre feet on their roadways. Under TROA, Reno, Sparks, and Washoe County are obligated to provide 6,700 acre feet. We've met about half of that under our own roadways, so this would be a significant benefit to us in meeting that. There's no financial impact identified at this time. This letter is specifically asking for their commitment to relinquish those rights before we proceed with getting any contracts in place to do research, filing fees, things like that. And with that, I'll open up to any questions.
Questions? Mr. Kerrigan?
Yeah, I just want to put a statement, just a statement out there. If they relinquish 2,700, the West Regional Water Commission is set up to buy about 700 more. That will be it. We will hit the 6,400 acre feet. So let's hope they do that. If they ask, then, I mean, I don't want to put it on the record how many, how much money that is. that is, but do they, have they asked for any money?
At this time, they're, they're not asking.
Because, I mean, there's no way we could afford that. I think we've pretty much shot the 19 million that federal government gave us, and that's about $20 million worth of water rights at going rates right now, so.
Yeah, no, all the discussions to date is that this relinquishment would be a public benefit. They live here, too.
Yeah, that would be a great deal, and then we could, I mean, that would be a for the water rights for TROA.
Yep, exactly.
Anyone else? Okay, looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion when you approve.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Carrigan, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve 6.1 as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Andy. 6.2. Consideration of possible acceptance of an interlocal agreement for the Regional Sex Offender Notification Unit. How are you, sir?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members, City Manager Driscoll, and City Attorney Adams. What we have here is a MOU that we would like your approval on regarding the Regional Sex Offender Notification Unit. Essentially, what occurred is, at least as long as I've been in law enforcement, there's been a desire by the, our regional partners, Washoe County and Reno, for the Sparks Police to take a leadership role in one of the regional units. Historically, we haven't had the manpower, the supervisors, to accommodate those requests, but through the course of the recession and the positions we lost, particularly in the support services area, we were able to accommodate freeing up a supervisor to run that unit. So essentially, in 2011, the Regional Sex Offender Notification Unit moved over from the Reno Police Department to the Sparks Police Department, and has been running out of our building since that time. What occurred recently is, we were pursuing a grant to help with some of the Adam Walsh requirements that are associated with that unit. Approximately $150,000 is what we're looking for. While pursuing that, one of the requirements of that grant application process was an MOU with our regional partners. That's when we discovered we didn't have an updated copy from the transfer over from the Reno Police Department, so we developed one. It's been through each agency's legal department, and we're looking for your approval today.
Questions for Chief Miller? Okay, looking for a motion?
I'll give you a motion.
Go ahead.
Move to approve and accept the interlocal agreement.
Do you have a second? Mr. Ratty? Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty, to Councilwoman Ratty, to approve 6.2. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Moving on, 6.3. Consideration of possible approval of a contract in the amount of $506,655 to Far Construction Corporation for interior coating of digester number five at the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility.
For the record, my name is Kim Labor. First of all, I'll figure out how to use it.
You're on right now.
I'm good.
You're good to go.
Once again, good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. For the record, my name is Kim Labor. I'm the Maintenance Manager at the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. General Business Item 6.3 before you today is a request to award a contract to Far Construction Corporation in the amount of $550,000, or $506,65. This project involves sandblasting, the necessary metal repairs, and recoding of the interior dome of digester number five. And what I'd like to point out is, this is the treatment plant. The Truckee River is here, Steamboat Creek. The new southeast connector will be running along this part of the plant, and at the entrance are the five digesters. Digestor number five is located right here. This digester is approximately 90 feet in diameter and 45 feet in height, and holds about a million and a half gallons of sludge. And I didn't bring a sample of sludge in today, but...
Thank you.
We'll take your word for it.
All right. The gas produced by the digesters is used for plant heat, and also will be used in the future cogeneration plant that was part of the Amoresco project that was recently approved by both Reno and Sparks, so the gas is gonna have a beneficial use to produce electricity for the plant. This digester was constructed in 1985, and an interior coating inspection was performed by CH2M Hill in 2006, and at that time, it was indicated that the digester was in need of recoding due to significant rust and corrosion. By performing this recoding, it will be possible to extend the useful life of this digester lid for approximately 20 years. It's kind of like keeping up the paint on your car and keeping it from rusting. It's same, same idea inside of this digester. It's very corrosive atmosphere and eats up the metal coating and, the metal inside the digester dome. This project is funded, funded under the operating budget of the TUMORF, of TUMORF, and therefore did not go to the Reno City Council. This project is a little more costly than would normally be expected for a project of this size, and really is a result of confined spaces required to go inside the digester. That involves having a safety rescue team on site at all times. The height of the digester dome is about 45 feet up to the digester floor, so it entails an intensive scaffold system, and that scaffold system has to be lowered through the dome using a crane, so it's kind of an intensive project. And also, there's the logistics of getting the materials in and out of the digester. So with that, that concludes my presentation, and I'll take any questions.
Questions for Kim? Okay, looking for a motion? Jump right in, kids.
I'll take it. I move that the City Council award the contract to Far Construction Corp. in the amount of $506,65.
Second. Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Lawson to approve 6.3 as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thank you. Appreciate it. Next is 6.4. Consideration, discussion, possible approval of a bargaining agreement between the City of Sparks and the Association of Sparks Fire Department's Classified Chief Officers.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize when we were doing the agenda. I should've asked that this be placed after I have 9.1, which is the closed-door labor session, to brief you on the details, and then bring it back after that for consideration and possible approval. So if we could delay this until after the closed-door labor session, that would be appreciated.
Okay. Let's move on to 6.6, then 6.5 we'll do after 8.2. 6.6. Reconsideration, discussion, and possible approval of fiscal year 2014-15 budget recommendations and fiscal items, including the City Manager's Recommendations for the City of Sparks' final budget and the proposed five-year capital improvement plan. Mr. Kronk?
Good afternoon. Jeff Kronk, Financial Services Director. This was, this is the agenda item of the two that were approved at the beginning of this session today. That's open for reconsideration specifically. It is items one and three of what was considered on April 14th, one being the City Manager's Budget Recommendations, Final Budget Recommendations for Fiscal 15, and then the third one, the third item that was voted on, on April 14th, would have been the Five-Year Capital Improvements Plan. So these are brought forth to, for reconsideration. I don't have any presentation or other comments, other than to answer questions. The information that was presented on the 14th was included in your packet today.
All right, questions? Okay, no questions, then. We're looking for a motion on the City Manager's Final Budget Recommendations. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's for number one.
Correct.
Do you have a motion?
I have a motion. I move to approve the City Manager's Final Budget Recommendations for Fiscal Year 2014-15.
Do you have a second? Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Lawson, to approve the City Manager's Budget Recommendations for 1450. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes three to one. Mr. Smith is a no. Okay, moving on to the Five-Year Capital Improvements Plan for Fiscal Year 1415 through Fiscal Year 1819. Whoops, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Moved to approve the Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan for Fiscal Year 2014, 2015 through Fiscal Year 2018 and 2019.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Carrigan, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty, to approve the Capital Improvements Plans for 1415 through 1819. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to public hearing items. 8.1. Public Hearing, Second Reading, and Possible Discussion on Bill Number 20... Bill 2669 to rezone from A40 to A5 Agriculture to NUD New Urban District. PCN 14003 aside of approximately 269.1 acres in size located east of Pyramid Way and north of Kylie Parkway Sparks. Ms. Melby?
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini and Council. Karen Melby, Senior Planner. This is a consideration and possible action on rezoning 269 acres from A40 and A5, which are agricultural districts, to New Urban District, or NUD, located in the Kylie Ranch North Plan Development. I've put on the docuCam here. The area in the top map is the existing zoning. This dark pink is A5, and then these lighter pinks are the A40 parcels. Below is the area that they're requesting to change to NUD. This is the balance of the Kylie Ranch Plan Development Handbook. They are requesting just about, rezone the rest of the property to A, to NUD zoning. There is 236.8 acres of A40 and 31.1 acres of A5, consists of seven properties which are currently vacant. This rezoning is an initial step in preparing these properties for the future Plan Development Handbook, so it will be coming before you. Staff finds the rezoning consistent with the master plan and the Kylie Ranch Plan Development Handbook. Based on these findings, staff and also Planning Commission recommend approval of this zone change. That concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Ms. Melby? No questions? Okay, I'll open the public hearing. This is a public hearing item. Anyone in the public like to speak to this particular agenda item? Just give your name for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Council and Mayor. My name is Lois Brown from KM2 Development. The rezone that you have before you today is continuation of the development of Kylie Ranch North. It's a bit of a housekeeping. It's the last seven parcels that are under the ownership of the people that I represent. These are the properties that they acquired in 2011. The rezone meets the Northern Sparks Sphere of Influence Plan, the tentative handbook that we've been working on since 2004, and it meets the rezone findings. It's consistent with the master plan, consistent with the surrounding land uses, and, thanks to Karen, public notice has been given. The Planning Commission approved this, and we would ask for your approval as well. I have Rob Pizell with me from Rubicon, and he can answer questions as well as I can. Thank you.
Questions for Lois over, Mr. Pizell? Welcome back.
Thank you.
No questions? Okay, anyone else under public comment? Close the public comment, bring it back to council for action. Is this your order? Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. Moved to approve Bill Number 2669, Ordinance 2488, rezoning real property associated with PCN 14003, based on the findings Z1 through Z3 and the facts supporting these as set forth in the staff report. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Carrigan, seconded by Mr. Smith, to approve Agenda Item 8.1, Bill Number 2669. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Okay, let's move on to 8.2. Public Hearing, Second Reading, Possible Discussion on Bill Number 2670. CA 3-14, an ordinance amending Title 20 of the Sparks Municipal Code to establish an administrative review, Section 20.12, including the process, application requirements, findings, and other matters property related thereto. Who's doing this? Ms. Melby? Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini and Council. I'm Karen Melby, Senior Planner. Before you today is an ordinance amending Title 20 of the Sparks Municipal Code to establish administrative review process, including, in this code amendment are, is a description of the process, the application requirements, the findings, and other items related to the code amendment 3-14. The zoning code currently has the site plan review process, which is for new construction, and what this, is a process to review uses as opposed to new construction. There'll be no public notice or public hearing, and a letter of approval would be issued with conditions of approval. Currently, a form of this process is used for the review of cell towers, and we're proposing to expand this to other uses, including medical marijuana establishments, which we'll be discussing later on today. The administrative review process is being proposed to establish a review process, and it will be conducted by the reviewing agencies, which include this, the city departments and also some of the other departments that we send to, depending on what type of use it is. There'll be no public hearing, as noted. The zone change, the zoning code will provide use standards that are typical conditions for these types of uses and the locations, proposed use. The administrative review, the, will review the proposed use on a case-by-case basis and then establish conditions that are appropriate for that project. The purpose and intent of the administrative review is to review certain uses to determine whether the proposed use will conform to the zoning ordinance, city codes, and other applicable city ordinances. The administrative review process allows the reviewing agencies to assess the proposed use to ensure that it is aesthetically acceptable and serves the interests of the public health, safety, and general welfare of the city. A person seeking an administrative review will file an application with the Community Services Planning Division. Staff will review the application, and within 15 days, issue a letter if there are identifying any deficiencies that we find in the application, or deem the application complete. Following that, we will go to a plan review meeting, which is a meeting with the applicant and the different agencies. At that meeting, we will determine what conditions we'll be putting on this project. Within 30 days of deeming the application complete, the Planning Division will issue a letter with conditions of approval incorporating concerns from the reviewing agencies or other departments. The applicant will have two years to establish the use unless another specified time is stated in the conditions of approval. If the use has not been established within two years from the date of approval, it'll become null and void. Once a permitted use has been established, established in accordance with the conditions of approval, the permit will be valid until revoked unless there is a specific expiration date. The code amendment also includes an appeal, ratification, and extension of time process. On April 17th, the Enterprise Fund Advisory Committee reviewed this application and its fees and endorsed the fee. That concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Karen?
Karen, how do we do it now? It just seemed like we're adding another layer of government here.
No, what we're proposing is, you know, we're in the process of amending our, redoing our zoning code, and we are going to put this as a new process in our zoning code and probably get rid of the site plan review process. And also, then we'll be doing new construction under this process of the administrative review. The reason we initiated this is that's how we're proposing to review some of the medical marijuana establishments, and so we're proposing this initially to review the medical marijuana establishments.
Just for me, it doesn't seem like we need it, so I'm gonna have our time voting for that, because we only get two dispensaries.
No, this is not for dispensaries. No, this is not for dispensaries. This would be for cultivation, the production and testing facilities. So, we're going to be able to review those types of uses without having to go through a public hearing.
Governor.
Mayor Martini, Councilman Lawson. The alternatives would be either to, particularly in the case of medical marijuana establishments, to subject them all to the special use permit process, which is, you know, I think what we'll be proposing for dispensaries and at least the version of the code changes that's been through Planning Commission. Well, alternative is to allow everything to go straight to billing permit. And we've had experience in the past, for example, where you've had a bar-type use that wants to go into the industrial area, and either you, you know, they simply go to billing permit, and there's no flexibility. They'd have to meet all the requirements in the code for, you know, that for that zoning district. And also, we don't have the ability to condition the project to really look at that use in that particular location. So, really, what we're intending to do with administrative review process is to build in both flexibility, but also to, again, be able to look at uses on a case-by-case basis without having to go through the special use permit process, which involves, you know, the discretion of the Planning Commission and the City Council, and also involves a public hearing and noticing.
A lot more money, too.
Well, potentially, if it takes more time, so.
Anyone else? Okay, this is a public hearing item, so I'll open to the public. Anyone want to speak to this particular agenda item? Seeing none, I'll bring her back to the council for action. Any questions for Ms. Melby?
I do have another question.
Go ahead.
So, we know we're applying it to medical marijuana, but what other uses do we see applying this process to?
Um, one other use that we're looking at is like outdoor storage. So, right now, they go through a site plan review, but we would be putting them through. And outdoor storage would be administrative review because we have to look at the particular site, make sure that there's adequate circulation, the way they're stacking the materials in outdoor, we have to make sure the fire department has an input on how they're stacking their material and make sure that we can get access to that property. So, initially, that's right now what other use we would be underlooking at using this process.
So, take me through the mechanics just a little bit. So, would those uses be called out in our zoning code to say that this process was available to them and other uses would not? Is that how we...
That's correct.
Okay. And so then if, as time passes, if we find that this process is working well and there are other uses that currently require a special use permit or a more intensive process that we would want to apply this to, we would have to come back and check those uses off?
We would have to do a code amendment to add those uses, yes.
Okay. So, right now, we're considering calling out medical marijuana establishments and possibly outdoor storage, but everything else would still... Because there's the other side of this is that neighbors sometimes want to know about what's going on next to them, and so if you eliminate special use permits broadly, then you're eliminating some public process that some people care about. So, I just want to make sure that at this time, we're talking about medical marijuana and outdoor storage.
That's correct.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move to approve CA-3, CA-3-14 to amend Chapter 20 of the Sparks Municipal Code to establish an administrative review process.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Carrigan to approve eight point two. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, let's go back to six point five. Consideration possible action on Resolution Number 3255 revising fees for development services provided by the City of Sparks and specifically considering fees for administrative review applications. Go ahead, Karen.
Again, Karen Melby, Senior Planner. This is the fee that we are requesting to be for the review of administrative reviews. It would be a deposit of $1,250, and then staff will charge our time at 120 an hour, and it's not to exceed the amount of $7,495. Initially, this fee will be used for medical marijuana cultivation, production, and testing. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Karen? Mike?
So, this is the same that we charge for a site plan review, right?
That's correct.
Any other questions? Ms. Ratty?
Give me for try... I've been trying to keep up with the mechanics of how this is working.
Yeah, that's fine.
It's confusing, and it's moving quickly. So, is this comparable to the fee that's been in the media recently about the $5,000 per application that Clark County is doing that generated a million dollars in revenue? Is it comparable to that?
Yeah, Clark County is requesting, they charge a special use permit for every medical marijuana establishment. And what we're proposing is that this would be just for the cultivation, production, and testing, and then we'll have a different fee with a special use permit for the dispensaries.
Go ahead. Mayor Martini, Councilwoman Ratty. Councilwoman Ratty, the distinction, though, is that in the case of Clark County, that was basically almost a fee, almost like a pre-application fee. It's a fee to file that you're going to ultimately apply for the medical marijuana-type license use. In our case, you know, we will be looking at a separate business or privileged license fee, and that will be coming through separate and apart from the land use entitlement approvals and the fees for those. So, in the case of medical marijuana establishments, this would be for the administrative review, which would cover cultivation facilities, the laboratories for independent testing, and then facilities where you're turning medical marijuana into, you know, baked goods or infused products or something along those lines. Dispensaries, when you, when that comes to you, and it's been through Planning Commission, would be subject to the proposal to the special use permit process, and so there's, it would be subject to special use permit fees.
Let me say that addition to that.
So, when it's all over, when it's all said and done, and applicants have gone to the state, and they've been provisionally approved by the state, they would come back to the City of Sparks, and we'd have to, we would take them through the business licensing or privileged licensing, and that will be a separate fee.
So, to say it back to you, this is our, this is the planning land use side of it, and it is, just for the public's information, it's the same fee schedule that we use for all other planning and land uses, because that's a question that I've gotten a lot to, is are we gouging this particular business compared to other businesses? So, at least on the land use planning side, it is comparable to other kinds of land use planning decisions.
Yes.
Which what remains to be seen is the decisions that we make on the business licensing side.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Carrigan?
Yeah, and that business license goes for dispensaries, grow facilities, testing, and all that, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So, and a question, Mr. Mayor, is we can have more than two grow, two processing, two testing in our city?
That's correct.
How many can we have legally?
There is no known limit, however, in talking to the state, they are going to look at the demand and make an estimation of how many, based on demand, how many would be appropriate for...
So, there hasn't come out with a percentage of county of how many can be in one particular area?
That's correct. They have not, not to our knowledge, anyway.
But isn't it, isn't it true that in the state regs, they're going to limit production to meet demand?
Yes, that's what it says, but that doesn't give us a number.
Well, they didn't say what the number was, but when you give a production facility authority to produce, they're going to give them the authority to produce a certain amount to meet demand?
Yes.
That's my understanding.
And there could be different types of production. I mean, one production could be making essential oils, one production could be making edible foods. So, that's another reason why there's no limit on the production, because it depends on the type of production that they're doing.
There's no prescribed limit on the production, but I think the state is withholding the right to place a limit on it.
That's correct. They are.
So, in essence, they could all end up in Sparks?
Potentially.
Grow facilities, yeah.
Although for two, more than two dispensaries. We only get two dispensaries, but we could add all of the manufacturing done in Sparks.
Potentially. I mean, if, you know, the, some of the southern jurisdictions are considering provisions in their codes that would require medical marijuana to be sold or dispensed through their, through their dispensaries to be, to have been grown in Clark County if it's available. So...
Is that part of state statute?
That's not part of state statute. That's part of what some of the, I don't recall if it's Las Vegas or Clark County, but one or more of the southern jurisdictions is considering that requirement.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, looking for a motion. Six point five.
All right, I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 3255 revising fees related to development services provided by the City of Sparks Administrative Review.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilman Carrigan to approve 6.5, Resolution Number 3255. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Karen. Appreciate it. Are you on the next one, too?
Yes.
Okay, let's move on to eight point three. Public hearing, second reading and possible discussion of Bill Number 2671, CA-2-14, an ordinance amending Title 20 of the Sparks Municipal Code to provide zoning authorization for the establishment of medical marijuana cultivation facilities. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini and Council. I'm Karen Melby, Senior Planner. Before you today is an ordinance amending Title 20 of the Sparks Municipal Code to provide zoning authorization to Section 41075 for the establishment of medical marijuana cultivation facilities, independent testing laboratories, and facilities for the production of edible marijuana products or marijuana-infused products. The code amendment before you today are the regulations governing Title 20 or the zoning code, the business license, which is Title V, and public peace, morals, and safety, which is Title IX, will be a separate code amendment. In the year 2000, voters in Nevada passed Question Nine, amending the state constitution to sanction medical cannabis or marijuana, and specifically to allow physicians to authorize qualified patients to consume and grow cannabis for personal use. In the year 2013, the Nevada Legislature passed, and Governor Sandoval signed into law SB 374, which directs the Nevada Department of Health and Human Services to develop regulations for and oversee the creation of licensed establishments to produce, test, and dispense cannabis and cannabis-infused products to authorize patients with, for medical use. The Division of Public and Behavioral Health of Nevada Department of Health and Human Services have adopted regulations for the operation of medical marijuana establishment. They became effective on April 1st of 2014. It is anticipated that the state will begin a process of accepting applications for registration certificates for medical marijuana establishments this summer. The state is, will accept applications for medical marijuana establishments during a 10-day period. There will be a notice issued 45 days prior to the opening of that 10-day period. As part of the state review for the medical marijuana establishments, the location must be identified. If the local, if the local government has not enacted zoning regulations or restrictions, the medical marijuana establishment is not required to secure approval from the local government. By enacting these regulations for the City of Sparks, this gives the city review and input on the location and operations of these facilities. By state law, there are four types of medical marijuana establishments. They are cultivation, independent testing lab, production, or infusing edible products and dispensaries. The code amendment before you today regulates cultivation, independent testing labs, and production or infusing of edible products. The proposed code amendment consists of three uses in the industrial area with the issuance of an administrative review. The administrative review will allow the staff to review the proposed location and facility on a case-by-case basis, as I discussed in the administrative review process. The first section of the code amendment is to add 10 new definitions based on the state definitions regarding medical marijuana establishments. The city's proposed regulations require the uses to comply with the Nevada regulations, including separation criteria. These are also standards, there are also standards governing operations, including loading, unloading, refuge disposal, public safety plan, property access, and emissions controls. The state's separation requirements for medical marijuana establishments, they may not be located within 1,000 feet of a public or private school that provides formal education for preschool or kindergarten through 12th grade. And they also must not be located within 300 feet of a community facility, which includes a daycare, public parks, playground, public swimming pool, and a center or facility where primary purpose is providing recreational opportunities or services to children or adolescents. In this code amendment, staff is proposing to state that the medical marijuana comply with these regulations rather than stating the current regulations. Just in case the state changes the regulations, then we would not have to do a code amendment to be consistent with the state. The next section of the code amendment establishes the parking requirements for these uses. The last section of this code amendment is the industrial use table, which permits these three uses in our industrial zoning district with the issuance of administrative review. These uses are cultivation, production, and medical marijuana-infused production. These uses would be permitted with the AR, Administrative Review. If the medical marijuana establishment loses its Nevada registration certificate, then the administrative review would become null and void by the city. The standards also provide that if the establishment closes, the city's administrative use is also null and void. This differs from other entitlements in Title 20 in that the administrative review does not go with the property, but it goes with the applicant. Planning staff has worked as a part of a citywide team and has gotten input from the other departments to formulate these regulations. We are requesting one minor change to our code amendment that's before you today.
Could I have the docuCam?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was waiting. Under, let me see if I can zoom in a little. Under Item C, under the standards for the medical marijuana establishments, we would like to remove the word standalone and to say within a building to make it consistent with the dispensary code amendment. That concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Ms. Melby? Go ahead, Karen.
So, you said that it differs from our normal process, a normal entitlement process in that the permission stays with the applicant instead of the building. But doesn't it stay with both? So, if the applicant goes away, then that permission goes away, but also if they want to move to another building, they'd have to go through another administrative review? Doesn't it require that it's both the applicant and the building that's been reviewed?
In this case, it would have, yes. Right now, if you have a, for example, outdoor storage, you have a site plan review for outdoor storage. If that business went out of business and another business wanted to move in there and they had outdoor storage, they could take over, but they have to comply with the conditions of the approval for that existing site plan review. In this case, what we're saying is if you, if that person would close the doors or they would lose their registration with the state, they no longer can operate that medical marijuana establishment within the city, and they cannot move it to another location.
I just want to make sure that we're not just saying that it's only the applicant so that that applicant then has carte blanche to move to another facility, and just because they've passed a review, they would not, that site would not have a review?
No, they cannot move it to another location, and the state won't allow, the regs don't allow them to do that either.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
My question is then, I'm running a successful business and I want to sell my license. What's the process for that? Does that use go away?
They would have to apply to the state for that permission to change the ownership, and they have to wait for the 10-day period to open up, which they are anticipating that would only open up at the most annually, the state will allow that 10-day review period. So, any changes to your operation then has to go back to the state. So, we would, we would rely on the state for, if the state would allow them to transfer that license to a different person, then we would allow them to transfer that license to a different person in that location, but it would be up to the determination by the state.
Good, thank you.
Anyone else?
Like Chad has.
Mr. Adams?
Would that new person then have to secure a new and different business license?
I think the, well, we certainly would be looking for advice from your office. In that case, yes. But I think the answer is yes.
But we're talking land use planning, so would that person have to go through an administrative review on the same building?
I don't think so. If the state would allow them to transfer their license, then I think that we would honor the administrative review for that property.
As long as they qualify for a business license? As long as they qualify for a business license under our rules?
Yes. Right.
Anyone else? Okay, this is a public hearing, I'm soliciting the public. Anyone in the public want to speak to this particular item?
I do.
Come on down. As soon as you're done, ma'am, state your name for the record, and when you're done, we have a card for you to fill out, if you wouldn't mind, please.
With the council, I-
Come on down.
Can I speak?
Yeah, just hand it to Ms. Ratty. She'll get them down the row for you. Okay, just state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Pam Boyd, Sparks resident and former Washoe County school nurse. There is no question that marijuana has a place in pain control and other medical symptoms. For years, this need was successfully met by synthetic THC and other forms of delivery. As a nurse with over 30 years of experience, I have personally seen the benefits for my cancer patients who receive their medications without any difficulties. In arriving at a decision, have you considered studies on use of marijuana, which show that there are long-term negative effects in respiratory, central nervous system, and brain function of either inhaling, eating, or otherwise consuming marijuana? Studies also show that marijuana is the gateway drug that opens the door to the use of other drugs among youth. In states who have already put these medical marijuana stores in place, excuse me, i.e. Washington, California, Colorado, have already seen an increase in marijuana use by non-medical need and more by the use of older children and young adults. In the state of Washington, drug use is so prevalent that parents are trying rehab centers with their teens instead of college campuses. Part of this is due to the increase in heroin use, marijuana being their gateway drug before the heroin. Washoe County has worked very diligently to keep drugs out of the hands of youth, thus contributing to their well-being and boosting their chances of high school graduation and their further skills in education. This will change adversely with the availability of medical marijuana and the subsequent integration into their curriculum. The welcoming of medical marijuana stores into our community is like saying, sure, go ahead, it's okay, there's nothing wrong with marijuana. The ratio of people needing medical marijuana is not equal to the amount of available medical marijuana, and the kids know this. You need to look at why the City of Sparks is so willing to bring this to our community, for tax revenue, or to help the small percentage of people who really need it for pain control. Think long and hard about this, because you are about to see graduation rates drop, property values and associated tax revenue drop, crime increase, and future generations of people who cannot function. How much lost tax revenue will you have then? Sincerely, Pam Boyd.
Thank you, Pam. Anyone else? Kayla. You want to speak?
Yes, sir.
Sure, go ahead.
My name is Stephen Cooksey.
Pam, did you fill out one of our cards?
Not yet. Oh.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
My name's Stephen Cooksey, and I'm here representing Envision Green. I just want to clarify, the state does allow for these things to move within, if it's within five miles, you just have to get approval from the state, and you can't transfer your license whatsoever. If more than 10% of the equity changes hands, you forfeit your license completely. You can't, there's no process for trading it, and when the window opens up, you just apply for a new one. So, there is going to be no transfer of licenses, once you have them.
Okay. Thank you, sir. And if you'd please fill out one of our speaker cards. Okay, anyone else? Kayla, close the public comment period and bring it back to council for action. Questions for Ms. Melby?
I have a comment.
Ms. Adams, go ahead.
I have a comment. Ms. Boyd, you forgot to include the huge explosion of black market marijuana. That'll result because medical marijuana is going to be so much more expensive. It's, as a council's legal advisor, though, I've got to, I've got to tell you that we've shared your concerns. Unfortunately, we have no choice under state law. It's not like the city is welcoming this. If the city doesn't try to regulate it now, then the state will essentially force this onto the City of Sparks without our ability to regulate it in any way whatsoever. So, we've essentially got two options. One, reject it and let the state take it over and bring it in without our ability to regulate it, or try and initiate regulation. So, it's not like we're welcoming it into the community for tax revenues, it's that we're trying to regulate this.
Why would the state choose Sparks over another?
The state, the state has chose Washoe County. And Washoe County is going to give out certain, certain, by law, they've got to give out certain entitlements to the various municipalities. Now, whether we accept one of those or not is, is up to us, but if we don't, then we won't be able to regulate it once it enters our community. And I agree with you, there are, there are a lot of unintended consequences to this, to this. Many would argue, just like you do, that it's the first step in, in the gateway drug, because nobody woke up in the morning and said, hey, I'm going to start using heroin today. They usually started off with drugs like this. So, it's up to us to try and protect the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens.
Thanks, Jeff. Questions? Okay, looking for a motion?
I move to approve CA-2-14 to amend Chapter 20 of the Sparks Municipal Code to establish zoning authority for the establishment of medical marijuana cultivation facilities, independent testing laboratories, and facilities for the production of edible marijuana products or marijuana-infused products.
Second. Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman-
Can I ask a question? Does that include the change- Including the amendments suggested by-
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Lawson, to approve Bill Number 2671. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Okay, let's move on to 9.1. Steve, do we want to, we want to adjourn to discuss 6.4? Do we want to adjourn to the redevelopment and then go to 6.4 and come back?
My suggestion would be what we do, we've done in the past, is go ahead and note that we're going to adjourn to this after the redevelopment meeting. You will be returning from this session for action, so you will be reconvening as the council after you consider the closed-door session.
Yes. So, does everyone understand what we're going to do is, we would like to recess to, we'd like to recess to redevelopment, and then after that, go into closed-door session to look at 6.4, then we will reconvene as the council and vote on 6.4. So, can I get a motion to that effect, or go ahead, Mr. Carrigan?
I have a question. Does anybody on this council really need to go into closed-door session? As far as I'm concerned, the contract was pretty cut and dry. I didn't have any questions, as far as I'm concerned. I'm willing to go ahead and vote on it without closed-door session.
I only have one question.
Okay, let's do this. Let's, let's go to 6.4, and anybody have any questions? Go ahead, Ed. Are you okay, Steve?
Yes, sir.
Is this still the same agreement as before? The salaries are the same, they're not getting a pay raise, they're not getting any additional benefits.
Good afternoon, Councilwoman Mayor Chris Severson, Employee and Customer Relations Manager. As far as financial, the pay rates are staying the same. There's one small change in the use of the cell phone allowance versus using the city's cell phone, but otherwise, that's the only financial component changing.
I'm good with that.
Okay, any other questions on 6.4, the contract with the fire union? Seeing none, let's look for a motion then. Mr. Carrigan?
Move for approval.
You have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Carrigan, seconded in the first part by Mr. Smith, to approve 6.4. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
I don't contract it.
Passed unanimously. Okay, so, moving to 9.1, we don't need a closed-door session.
No, Mr. Mayor, we do not. Thank you.
Okay, comments from the public. Anyone in the public like to speak? Comments from the city council or city manager? Go ahead, Mr. Driscoll.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Steve Driscoll, city manager. For the record, I do have some announcements. This is intended for our meeting currently. There's terms that will expire on the following committees, as of June 30th, 2014. For the Civil Service Commission, there are two members with three-year terms. For the Parks and Recreation Commission, there are three members of three-year terms each. Persons interested in serving on any of these committees should complete a community service application available from the city clerk's office. You may also apply online at the city's website, www.cityofsparks.us. Click on City Services on the webpage, and then click on Volunteering, Get Involved, and then you click on Fill Out City of Sparks Volunteer Application. Applications will be accepted until the close of business on May 30th of 2014. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, council, any questions, comments? Okay, seeing no further business, we are adjourned. Go ahead.
Okay, I'll call the order, the Sparks Redevelopment Agency Meeting, April 28th, 2014, with a roll call, please.
Chairman Smith.
Here.
Agency members, Ratty.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Martini.
Here.
Carrigan.
Here.
Schmidt, absent. Agency Attorney Adams.
Here.
And Agency Manager, Driscoll.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Okay, I'll open it up to public comments. Anybody in public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the agency. Recommendation to approve the minutes of.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Number four, report of claims and bills approved for payment and appropriation transfers for the period of February 19th through April 9th, 2014.
Move for approval, Chair.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Number five, consideration discussion, possible approval of the chief administration officers' final budget recommendations for the City of Sparks Redevelopment Agency Areas 1 and 2 fiscal year 1415. Mr. Cronk.
Checked it this time. Good afternoon, Jeff Cronk, Financial Services Director. As was with the city on the 14th, and also what was reconsidered just earlier today, this is the same procedure, where we are presenting the final budget recommendations for fiscal 15. Attached to your agenda is a packet of information, summary financial information. As far as the calendar goes, we're looking again for your direction today to build the final budget. The tentative budget has been filed, as it has been with the city as well. This is for redevelopment areas 1 and 2. Both of those tentative budgets have been filed, and we're going to hold a public hearing on those tentative budgets on May 20th at 9:00 a.m., and then on May 27th, we will bring back the final budget as we prepare based on your recommendations today for your final approval. With that, I will enter ten questions.
Any questions, Mr. Cronk? Is this the same one I had reconsidered?
No.
Or just redevelopment?
This is redevelopment, both Areas 1 and 2, and the information that was provided in your packet, both on the 14th and then today, is all the same.
You owe me one. Okay, any, any questions?
Can we vote on May 20?
I'm sorry?
We actually voted on May 20.
No, no, the public hearing is just that. It's just whoever shows up, just hold a public hearing. The vote will actually be on the 27th.
27th, I'll-
May? Yes.
No.
No, the 27th is a regular council and redevelopment agency day, meeting day, so it'll be held on that day.
Is it plethora of information?
I'm just making sure we have all the information.
That's true.
I won't be here either. Any more questions or comments?
Okay, looking for a motion? Move for approval, Mr. Chair's alibi.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Did you get that? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Comments, I'll open back up for public comment. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak at this time? Armando.
Do you need one for other thing?
Armando.
Chairman Smith, members of the agency board, Armando, an LA city planner. Just very quickly, an update on the 10.2 acres. The agency board approved the purchase and sale agreement for that on March 10th. That started a 30-day due diligence period. It did provide for a slight extension based on when we got to them, the results of a Phase II environmental assessment. We got that to them, and they have approved it, and basically, they are moving forward at this point, so they have moved to the next stage. They deposited additional $50,000 into the escrow, and that, plus the original $50,000, that $100,000 will now be released to the redevelopment agency, and so hopefully, we'll move on now, and we'll be, we'll get to a close at some time in the, in the future, but they're, they're moving on.
So, it's nonrefundable?
The first $100,000 is nonrefundable.